Mr. Klitz?
He should be here like...
He would have the carnival.
Nah, he's just up in the store.
Pete, we're gonna get started.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is September 14, 2016. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Middle School Library. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who have placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yes. We're talking about the minutes, but...
Yes.
There was a change in the minutes which is reflected in, I guess, the amendment that we received.
Could you speak up? We can't even hear down here.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? The minutes were amended, I guess, between, I guess, Don had clarified some issues with some statements by one of the commissioners.
Oh, you know what?
After that statement, I guess this is the high lit part, I would just ask if the minutes also reflect that once the statement was made by Mr. Graham that Mr. Killey's objected to that statement. That statement is not included in the minutes. I think it's only fair, the former commissioner's here, statement was made to him, he made a statement back, we allowed that colloquially, so...
That's consistent with my recollection. Are you, Eddie, is that okay, to add that?
If that's what the record reflects, sure.
Yeah. So Mike, are you, Pete, you made the motion?
Yes.
You willing to accept the amendment to the motion?
I'll accept the amendment with the noted changes.
Do we need to get the second or did we accept that too? Mike, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'll accept that.
We've got both lined up here. Okay. All in favor of the motion and minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. At this point, we're all here except Commissioner Shum who will be here momentarily. He's a victim of our punctuality tonight. And we have no special reports, so now we will move into the public portion of the meeting. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, the public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time.
Mary Harkins, 1799 East Willgrove Avenue. I want to take the opportunity to thank the board for pursuing the action against the billboard company. It's certainly reassuring to know that all of our concerns have been heard, and I know that the action is progressing because we've been notified that pictures will be taken. If you remember, I shared a letter from Mr. Barkowski to us assuring us that the billboard would not be seen, and my only concern is that if a picture is taken from my house right now, the billboard can't be seen, but in about four weeks, the billboard will be quite visible. And I'm just, I'm concerned because I don't want to be made a liar out of this because it's just not quite the right time of the year. I just wanted to share that. I don't want you to waste the money on pictures, and I know that when the courts are progressing, the courts are progressing, but the impact of the billboard is not quite, certainly from our perspective, not quite as great today as it will be in about four weeks.
We appreciate that.
And again, thank you for, I'm sure it's not happening for free.
Yes. Thank you. Your turn.
My turn? Thank you so much. Thanks. Hello, my name is Rita Ford. I live on Glen Circle in Erdenheim, and my question is about street paving. Glen Circle had work done this year and last year. I think it was the beginning of last summer. There was Aqua work first, pretty much dug up the street a lot. This year, a lot of gas lines had to be replaced with our neighbors, and we were told last year after the Aqua work that the street would be paved this year, but it would have to wait until after the gas work would be done. Makes sense, you know, dig it up twice. So I saw an email come out, maybe it was one of your notices, listing the streets to be paved this year. Didn't see Glen Circle on it, so I called the administration building and was told, "No, you're not on the list. There are streets around here that need it a lot more than you." Streets that haven't been paved for 20 years and so forth, and I understand that, but we were told that it would be done. So I don't know the young woman's name whom I spoke with, so I asked if I could leave a message for the gentleman who's the director of the Public Works, Mr. Sirianni. It was a month ago, and I haven't gotten any acknowledgement or response from him. So anybody here now?
Don, you wanna take that?
I don't know why it was or wasn't done, but it's a fluid list, and in fact, there could have been, Glen Circle could have been on the list, and then it was removed because something else came up that was worse than Glen Circle. They're all red.
Yeah, that's not what they said, but, not that it was a fluid list, but it wasn't on the list at all for this year.
Can we let her know where it stands?
What the board gets, yeah, I'll try to find that, but the board kinda gets, boy, if we had all the money in the world, well, this is a little bit more reasonable, and then we could handle this. So it's probably on this one and two, and just do it, make the cut for it. But I'll look it up.
Yeah, it'd be great, because we were told it would happen. You could let me know.
Don, do we approve a final list?
Yes, you do say it.
When was that final list?
Probably April or May.
Okay.
I think the email was June or July.
No, no, we, my point is, is that we as a board voted on that list, approved that list, so...
So we would know if Glen Circle was on it or not then.
At that time.
And we see the, we'll start seeing the list at budget time, and then we see it periodically, and things move up and down for whatever, streets degrade and things happen, get cut open, and then we vote then because it's about to go out to bid. And it's, part of it's guessing how much money, we know how much money you have, but what it's gonna cost and how that's gonna flush out.
All right. So to follow up then, Mr. Berger, to find out what you learned of that, should I call your office? Can you email me? What do we do?
I can see, I, we were talking about something related this month, and Glen Circle, nothing like to the cul-de-sac, was on first draft, so it was, it was on the list, but it didn't make the final list.
When do you think we can get it back on?
Well, what they do is they just kinda work down. I can take a look at it, but for instance, a lot of them on this first list were done. It's hard to see these highlighted ones. So, I'll look, I'll, I'll ask.
Okay. So again, how, would we communicate? Should I call your office to ask for that, or will you email me, or?
Yeah, why don't you call?
Call, call your office, ask for you. Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Sirianni is not around for a little while, so...
Oh, really? So this is early summer?
Give me a week or so.
Okay. Well, that's sure.
I have a question, Don. It doesn't appear to be on the 2017 highway resurfacing list either, but if Aqua dug up the street, don't we get a contribution from Aqua to repave the street?
Well, either Aqua will do their half, or if we know we're gonna pave it, we'll take that money, and they actually give us a little bit more than it costs us, just because it's a little cheaper.
Uh-huh.
That 2017 highway list, that pertains pretty much to those Aqua projects that are going on now.
Right.
And Don's putting them on record.
So that's not the final list. This was, this was last year's Aqua. When did they do the street?
Last year and this year, two parts. First was Aqua, then this year was gas.
Aqua was two years ago?
Last, last spring, 15.
15, okay.
Yeah. And in 16, so when they did that, that's when they said, "We won't do it this year because there's a schedule for gas." So wait till this year, and that's where it dropped off.
What did people, did you finish the work, you know, drop it?
I'm gonna say May, around May.
Yeah, so we were, we were already started to create the list, and if Don doesn't know it's gonna be completed, then...
Okay.
October back.
Okay, thanks. Part two to my questions, kind of the same topic, but personally say thank you for the work that a lot of people did, Mike especially, getting Brookside taken care of with the, it's not finished yet, I know a working process, a lot of things have happened. I also own a property, my father's former house, on Brookside, so they're going through a lot of work, as you know. Has anybody been on Brookside lately other than Mike?
No, that's what we, yeah, that's what was approved last year.
Yeah, that's, wow. I'm glad to see all the work, but it is a mess. The guys are complaining about how the engineering has been wrong, gas lines are supposed to be...
It's been a little more complicated than it initially.
I'm sure it's very complicated, but be that as it may, it'll, it'll finish. So likewise, they said, "Don't worry, we'll take care of paving everything, correcting curves that have been taken out and such." However, again, Aqua's coming, so they said that'll be this fall perhaps? So look to next year, probably?
Yeah, we talked about that on Monday night. If that's because Commissioner Wilson's to get people here to understand it's gonna get done, but it's gonna be a while because of the stuff that's going on.
And there's another, there's a second phase of that drainage project that won't be done until next spring.
Spring of 17?
Of 17. So right now, Brookside, Mr. Sirianni has suggested to the board that we add Brookside Road to the 2017 resurfacing, because Aqua will have done their thing, we will have done two of our phases, and then we'll put a nice...
So next year, next summer, probably?
It's July August.
Of next year, okay. What's that second phase that's happening? I kinda lost track. I mean, 'cause things so much now, what's the next thing that's happening?
It's very similar, it's just down at the bottom of the hill.
Down further, oh, oh, okay. Okay. And 17 will be paving, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Jenny New? We waited for you.
Excuse me, Jenny Crawford, 711 Sandy Hill Road. It's my understanding, excuse me, I just put a name in my mouth, that Mr. Garrity, you're setting up a photographer to come and take pictures of our home, of our homes from...
Yeah, I was hoping that there would not be any discussion of that at public meeting, but it's out there now anyway, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's, but all right, it's, it's out there anyway.
Okay. So my only question is, and that's, I'm open to that, but I do request that the board then, if we have to do it now, I've been in cases where I know that there's timeframes that has to be done, that we also set up to do it in a month or two when the trees are down.
And then I totally, I totally understand that and why.
Before the leaves are down.
I was directed to file, so I filed, and I, not knowing when the court's gonna schedule a hearing, I couldn't take the risk of not having any evidence. So that's what we did, but I will certainly, if we get a hearing before the leaves come down, I will certainly explain to the judge that we want another chance when the leaves are down.
Okay. And if we have to go before the leaves are down, I know that there are some neighbors that do have pictures, are you willing to take those pictures?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, that's awesome, okay.
Great.
Is there any discussion about the billboard being on? I go to, I wake up to it, I go to bed to it. I don't understand why the reason, I mean, that because we're taking him to court that he gets to keep the billboard on all day and all night, so has anything been discussed about that, or?
Yes, ma'am. The injunction asked him to turn it off complete, total, but we'll see what happens when we get in front of the judge.
Okay, so I'll talk to him.
And you'll be notified of when that'll be, so that you or any of your neighbors who wish to will be given the opportunity to tell the judge face to face how it affects your life.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, I'll talk to you later.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, Mr. President, I just wanted to let the neighbors know, I was hoping for more of a turnout from our neighbors, or emails, but emails that you have, pictures that you have of those homes, you can forward them to me, so that, make sure that they're in a JPG format, so that we can forward them on to the township manager and get them over to our solicitors.
Mr. Graham, the only thing that I would add to that is, is if, I would ask the people, if they're gonna do that, to put as much information as possible on the back of the pictures, when they took it, what your settings were on your camera even, because, you know, all the pictures will be subject to cross-examination and probably to allegations that they were artificially brightened to make the sign look worse than it is.
Well, I had already addressed that in an email to them, and I had asked our residents to make sure that all the photo sent were not photoshopped and that they were timestamped as to when they took them, also the area of the home where you took them from, your front, backyard, bedroom window, to make sure that our solicitor can utilize them to the best of his abilities to provide a defense for that.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment?
I'd just like to make one announcement to our, to an honored guest that took the time out of his busy schedule to come and join us tonight, Dr. William Taylor, who is the first vice president of Sheltonham NAACP, and who also is with the Sheltonham Township Human Relations Committee. Those committees also include Springfield Township, Orland, and Addington. So I asked him to come out because I would like him, well, I would like for some of the residents to become familiar with him in order to become a part of that organization, especially with the NAACP, in order that we can have a more of a presence in that particular branch of service. The NAACP, a very honorable and longstanding committee, not only just for African-Americans, but for the entire community. It would be very good if some people could talk to him and seek informational members, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you for coming out, sir. Okay, we will now move on to the business portion of the meeting. First item on the agenda is the September bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the August check reconciliation in the amount of $1,859,521.39, and the September bill listing in the amount of $1,104,821.51. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next item is the item Resolution Number 1378. Concerns are pension obligation. Pennsylvania Act 205, also known as Municipal Pension Plan Funding Standard and Recovery Act, requires that in September of each year, the chief administrative officer of the municipality shall certify the minimum municipal obligation to fund the municipal pension plans for the ensuing year. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1378, a resolution establishing the 2017 minimum municipal funding obligation for the police, salary, and hourly employees' pension plans. The Township Pension Plan MMOs will be posted as line items in the 2017 budget as follows: salaried pension plan, $560,732; police pension plan, $767,245; and the hourly pension plan in the amount of $240,798. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. Did the MMO go down?
The MMO went up this year, but went down last year.
So...
Went up this year by about 3 percent. Last year, it went down by about 3 percent.
And when you say this year, you mean our obligation?
Going into, for the year 2017, it's projected to go up 3 percent. For the year 2016, it had gone down 3 percent.
Okay, so for the budget purposes, we're gonna assume it's even?
For budget purposes, for 17, we're gonna assume that it's going up 3 percent.
Okay.
Any other question or comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Next, we have the budget meeting schedule. I'm gonna now read the dates of the budget meeting. First, we will have a meeting with support agencies, that'll be on September 21 at 7:00. We will have the budget workshop meeting on October 19 at 7:00. The budget presentation will be at our November business meeting, which is November 9 at 7:30, and the budget hearing and adoption will be at the December business meeting, which is December 14 at 7:30. All meetings will be held in the Springfield Middle School Library, with the exception of the meeting with support agencies, which will take place at the temporary municipal building, 1200 Willow Grove Avenue, Windmore. That's item three. Item four is township auditor. I move that the Board of Commissioners engage the services of B. Bergvall &amp; Company of Warrington, Pennsylvania, to audit the township's financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2016, for a fee of $21,750. In the event a federal single audit is required, such an audit will be prepared for a price not to exceed $5,000. Engagement is to be performed pursuant to a letter dated September 8, 2016, from Jennifer McHugh of B. Bergvall &amp; Company. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then one just question as to how does that compare to the past year? I think it's $250 more, which is just over a 1 percent increase. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That concludes my report, so I would like to call on the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to my tardiness, I have no report this evening.
You're reporting on your time.
Okay, moving along...
I apologize.
We got by. Moving along, I call on the Chairman of the Community Development Committee Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated September 7, 2016, from Cristian Pianzio, legal counsel for Skip DiMarco, owner of the proposed Windmore Court subdivision plan on Pine Road, extending the 90-day subdivision land development plan review period until October 31, 2016. That is my motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do we have any reason for the extension?
The plans that exist now, they're not compliant with the code, and they're actually going back to the drawing board and reducing the number of homes by one from three to two. So they're kind of redesigning the whole project.
Which is good. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And next, I move the Board of Commissioners to accept a letter dated August 24, 2016, from Halligan of MEH Investments, owner of 821 Bethlehem Pike, Erdenheim, extending the 90-day subdivision land development plan review period without limitation as to time for the proposed land development at 821 Bethlehem Pike, Erdenheim. That is my motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any ques, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just what was the reason for the extension?
The plans aren't ready, they're not compliant with the code.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. I'd like to call on the Chairman of the Zoning Committee Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that the zoning hearing board did not receive any applications for the month of September 2016. Therefore, the regularly zoning hearing board meeting scheduled for Monday, September 26, 2016, has been canceled. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning hearing board will be Monday, October 24, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Springfield Township, excuse me, Springfield Middle School Library, 1901 Papier Mill Road, Orland. I have one motion for the Wawa 806 Bethlehem Pike Flower Town White Marsh Township. The Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township wishes, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township wish to be a party with legal standing in any matter before the White Marsh Zoning Hearing Board as it relates to the proposed Wawa 806 Bethlehem Pike Flower Town White Marsh Township. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of Township Solicitor to attend all meetings of the White Marsh Township Zoning Hearing Board related to the proposed Wawa at 806 Bethlehem Pike Flower Town White Marsh Township, and to enter an appearance to be a party with legal standing and to oppose the Wawa proposal at the, as presented. That is my motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Daley. We'll move on to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of August 2016, Springfield Township residents recycled 215 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 80.7 percent. The net cost to the township this month was $16,419.04. That is my report, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Wilson. Let's move on to the Chairman of the Human Resources Committee Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion for the Susan G. Coleman three-day march. I believe that the Board of Commissioners permitted the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation to utilize a portion of Cisco Park as a rest stop for the Susan G. Coleman three-day. The 2016 three-day event will be held October 14 through 16, 2016. The use of Cisco Park is scheduled as a part of the first day, October 14. Permission is being granted, subject to the Foundation's security permit for the use of the park, providing a certificate of insurance listing Springfield Township as an additional insured for the event. Both the application and the certificate of insurance have been received. That is my motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I mean, I'm sorry. I was reading...
Using my executive discretion. Please record a unanimous vote.
Please strike that. Yes, please. My apologies.
Boy, find her.
And she's walking in there, too, so... I do have another announcement for the Community Day. The Springfield Township Community Day Festival and 5K Run One Mile Walk will be held on Saturday, October 9, 2016. The day will begin with a 5K run and a one-mile walk at 9:00 AM, starting at Cisco Park, winding through the Erdenheim neighborhood, and finishing up at Cisco Park. The Township Community Day Fest, Fest, Festival will commence immediately following the race at approximately 10:00 AM and run through 1:00 PM. As in the past, the Community Day will include free food, activities, and entertainment for all ages. Registration for the 5K run is available through a link on the Springfield Township website or directly at www.erdinecivic.org/5k. Businesses and organizations interested in participating in the Community Day event or being a sponsor of the event can receive registration information by going to the township website, www.springfieldmonco.org, and clicking on the calendar for the month of October. There's also a Facebook page named Springfield Township Community Day, where all of the above mentioned links are also located. That is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Finally, we go to the co...
Excuse me. Oh, I think Commissioner Graham reported that was Saturday, October 9, and Sunday.
Did I say Saturday?
You didn't.
If I did, my apologies. It's Sunday, October 9. Thank you, Commissioners.
It'll be more fun on Sunday.
Finally, we move to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee Commissioner Maxwell. Finally, we move to the co-chairman of the Public Safety Committee Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of a letter D. of August 21, 2016, from George, from Chief George B. Womack III of the Flower Town Fire Company, advising that the fire company will be providing firefighting services for the Lake Harmony Fire Department in Lake Harmony, PA, in order that the Lake Harmony Fire Company may participate in the New Jersey State Firemen's Convention. The coverage will extend from September 16 through the 18th, 2016. The Board of Commissioners will provide the vehicular liability insurance during the trip. Chief Womack has made arrangements with McGarvey County Fire Dispatch and the area fire chiefs in order that the Flower Town Fire District is provided proper firefighting services during their absence. That is my motion.
Thank you. Conclude your report. Is that a motion, or a, that's an acknowledgement?
That's a motion.
Oh, it's a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. That concludes our agenda. Do we have any final public comment?
We have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Daley's coming about the Wawa meetings. Did you say that your intention to oppose the plan as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was there, I know you were there at the White Marsh meeting.
Yeah, we talked about it Monday.
I know, I wasn't.
Right, but we had a big crowd, and we talked, that's why.
Did you? Oh, okay. Didn't know that.
It's a little proactive, because they haven't filed a formal petition yet. So we're doing this now, in case of the interim, there is one file.